All right, welcome everybody. We'll call the order. The Grand Forks City Council meeting for Monday, November 4th. Get a roll call, please, Marine.
Weigel.
Here.
Selsky.
Here.
Berg.
Here.
Linsky.
Here.
Friedols.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
and Bean.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Item 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.3, Mayor's Announcements. I want to highlight, on Friday, we had a good turnout. We had city council members, park district reps, public school reps, CVB Greater Grand Forks, Visit Greater Grand Forks reps, Choice Health, Altru, Alara Center reps, as well as some from the C Mar and the Architecture Firm. Went down and visited three facilities down in Fargo, similar to the sports facility that we're looking at building here. That included the NDSU New Turf Facility, the Holbert Aquatic Center, and then the Fargo Park District Sports Complex as well. And then we ended up with a tour here at the Fritz Pollard Athletic Center. I think we, you know, gleaned some further insight, and I think it was definitely a trip that was worthwhile. So I want to thank everybody that was able to make that. Obviously, we are on the eve of an election, so if you haven't voted yet, tomorrow, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. We've got four sites across the city, so you can go to The Icon, you can go to Hope Church, see if I can do this in memory, Home of Economy, and then, of course, I think it's called Runnings now, and then, of course, the Alara Center. Doesn't matter where you live in town, you can go to all four. And then, lastly, just wanted to point out, well, actually, I've got two things. We will be closed. Veterans Day is the 11th, so city services will be shut down for that day, so a great opportunity. No, water will still be delivered, as it always is. And the wastewater will also be taken on that day. But certainly, we, you know, want to thank and thank all of our veterans on that day. So if you get a chance, keep them in your thoughts and in your minds. And then, lastly, I know we're going to go over this, but we've got some really exciting news. I know Ryan Reesinger is here with the Airport Authority, but getting that grant to be able to ultimately bring in a SkyWest United Denver flight. Just going to continue to grow our air service here and hopefully bring some competition and ultimately bring those prices down so people can afford to fly and have the options to fly out of here, and it's all going to build. So this is the start. A lot more work to do, and we'll have some more conversation on that in just a few minutes. That's all from Mayor's announcements. So we'll move on to item 2, Awards, Presentations, Appointments and Proclaimations.
2.1 is proclamation Lung Cancer Awareness Month, November 2024.
Sounds good. Lung Cancer Awareness Month 2024. I, Brandon Bochenski, hereby proclaim November 2024 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month in Grand Forks, North Dakota, encourage and recognize the need for research in lung cancer affecting women and lung cancer health disparities and encourage all citizens to learn about lung cancer and early detection through lung cancer screening. And you can see the further proclamation on the website.
2.2, Presentation on the 2025 to 29 CDBG Consolidation Plan.
All right, Mr. Hanson, please.
Mayor Bochenski, President Sandy, members of the council. I have Root Policy here with us, Heidi Agler and Lucy McGee, to go through the consolidated plan process so far. There are consultants that we've hired to develop our plan, do a lot of the public outreach and data collection and analysis. So I'll hand it over to them to quickly hit some of the highlights of those findings and quickly show you what our draft goals are for the next five years.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to motion to receive and file on this.
To receive and file a presentation?
Yeah.
Guess what was the rest of the council on? Are you doing? I guess I'd look for further input here.
Mr. Hanson, we're just hitting the highlights.
Yep.
I think we should just let him hit the highlights.
Okay.
Thank you.
I guess you, the messages have been sent. They'd like a short presentation, Mr. Hanson. There you go, sir. Please.
Sounds good. I trust Heidi and Lucy have seen that, so I'll hand it over to Heidi.
Great, thank you. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. And I'll just tell you, I'll just prompt you to move forward. My pleasure, I'm Heidi Agler. I'm with my colleague here, Lucy McGee, and it's our pleasure to be here to give you some highlights on the consolidated plan. Go ahead and go forward. So we are a firm out of Denver, Colorado, and we are part of your regional office for the HUD Plan Review, and we've been hired to do this plan. We've worked many years for the city of Grand Forks and in the region, and we're happy to be working with you all again. Go ahead and go forward. I'll give you a brief overview of the plan for housing. I'll talk a bit about community engagement, and then we'll just review the draft goals. So I think as many of you are aware, but we always like to include this slide for the public who are viewing this. The consolidated plan is a document required by HUD. It contains a needs assessment. It contains information from community engagement to be able to inform five-year strategy. And just, you know, an idea that we have been discussing with a lot of our clients is the ability for the consolidated plan to be able to pilot new ideas and programs with very little risk. We're seeing a lot of our clients try out new things with this planning document. At the end of the day, this is a document that uses meaningful engagement to decide how funds should be spent over the next five years, and these are block grant funds from HUD. You can go ahead and go forward. Just a note about what we're calling a fair housing supplement. In the Fair Housing Act, in the Civil Rights Act, there is an obligation for anybody that receives HUD funding to be a partner in furthering fair housing. And so one of the things that we look at are disparities in housing choice as part of this plan. And we have an additional supplemental analysis that achieves the goal to help the city of Grand Forks affirmatively further fair housing. So you'll see that as a supplemental report to the plan. Talk briefly about some of the top-level findings, and what I would invite you to do as I present these findings is think about how you can utilize this data. It's very current data. There's quite a bit of analysis that goes into this to set broader housing strategy for the city. So just a bit of news here. Your population increased mildly over the last 12 years. Household income, median household income, rose by 46%. About 10% of individuals in Grand Forks have a disability, and of those 44% have housing needs. When we look at the analysis, we start with something called cost burden and severe cost burden. This is when people are paying more than 30%, and for severe cost burden, 50% of their household income in housing, or sorry, the gross household income in housing costs. These are people who we worry about, particularly severely cost-burdened households. They're at risk of foreclosure and also eviction. And then we looked at the point-in-time count. This is an annual count that looks at the number of people who are living without shelter in January of each year. 10 unsheltered homeless individuals and 69 sheltered individuals. Most advocates, what we talk to in every community, feel that this is a lower-bound count because it's just capturing people who are seen as being unsheltered. It does not include people who are double that, people who are living in vulnerable, maybe unsafe situations. So generally, the homeless population is much higher than what that count is counting. Go forward. This gives you some data on cost burden. This is for renters. This is cost burden by income. It also gives you change from 2010 forward. You can see that for people who are not earning a lot of money, so less than $20,000 a year, cost burden's always been really high. But what to pay attention to is how it's increased for those earning $20,000 to $50,000, and even $50,000 to $75,000. So as housing costs have gone up, and they've gone up faster, and household incomes have risen, cost burden has also risen. We did a regional comparison, so we wanted to see how does Grand Forks compare with some of your peer communities? And you'll see from this graphic that the cost burden is very high, of course, for those extremely low-income households. Pretty much the same for that $20,000 to $50,000, although Fargo is a little more affordable, so is Bismarck. But Grand Forks, you know, comparatively has relatively high burden. Grand Forks softens off a little bit, about $50,000 to $75,000 mark, whereas Rapid City, one of our comparables, is still really high. So something to benchmark yourself against. This is an easy way to look at yourself against peer communities in terms of how well you're doing in meeting affordable housing needs. So I'll talk a little bit about household income growing 46% between 2010 and 2022. When we look at the median home value, that increased by 64%. We look at the median rent, that increased by 49%. And we look at these comparable, we compare these statistics against one another to understand how much harder is it for households to be able to afford both to buy and rent relative to their income going up, and this tells us that it is harder. So the other thing that we do when we're doing this analysis is do something called a gaps analysis. And for the rental gaps analysis, we compare the number of renters to the number of rental units that are affordable at their income range. And where you see the red numbers in the far-right-hand column, that's where there is an affordability gap. So for people who are making less than $20,000 a year, too few units to serve them relative to their income. You also see red numbers there at the highest income bracket. So what this tells us is that your rental market is very narrowly focused, as we see in most rental markets. Your rents, you know, sort of hover between $875 a month and $1,250. That's where most people are finding units. So people who can't, who can't find units that are affordable to them at that low-income level, they rent up because they can't find affordable units. And then your renters who are making more, they rent down, maybe because they want to, because they're saving up for homeownership. So you see a gap mostly. What we care about is that gap at the lowest income level. And this shows your comparison, comparative gap to peer communities. Sioux Falls has the largest gap at 4,000 units, Fargo, 37, almost 3,800, and you're around 2,300. So Grand Forks is about in the middle in terms of the gap and how wide the renter gap is relative to peer communities. This also shows, this next graphic shows gaps in the homeownership market. We do sort of a similar thing here, and you'll see where there are too few, too far, too few units relative to people who might want to buy. So what we really care about here are renters who are making $25,000 to $50,000, $50,000 to $75,000. We look at the share of renters there relative to the share of homes that they could choose from if they were out shopping around. And what this tells us is you have to make $50,000 to $75,000 to really have any kind of play in the ownership market, and you're probably better off if you're making $75,000 or more. And again, this is the similar gap by peer, for your peer communities. And you can see here that you're a little on the higher end in terms of the homeownership gap. I'm going to pass it to Lucy to quickly talk about engagement.
Thank you, Heidi. A large aspect of the consolidated plan is community engagement, where we hear from residents in the community and what they would like to see prioritized in some of the barriers that they experience when accessing housing in Grand Forks. So we conducted four resident focus groups in Grand Forks in June. The first one was with CVIC and survivors of domestic violence. The second was with voucher holders. The third was with residents experiencing homelessness at the Northlands Rescue Mission. And the fourth was with residents with disabilities in collaboration with development homes. And so there were a few themes that came through these resident focus groups. The first was that credit and criminal history are consistent barriers to entering housing in Grand Forks. And housing options are severely limited for people with poor credit or criminal history. They reported that many of their options felt unsafe. And voucher holders also reported that some of the very few options that they could find, that they could use their voucher with, felt unsafe or were not well-maintained. Safety was a top concern for residents in these focus groups. They noted that there were limited options, especially for families, in terms of emergency shelters and transitional housing. And again, housing choice voucher users felt that the areas that they could use their vouchers did not feel safe to them. Residents also identified a lack of mental health care, dental health care, and substance abuse recovery resources in the city. And lastly, transportation was a key topic for many of the people we interviewed. They viewed that there could be a lot of improvements to better accommodate people with disabilities, that the timetables for the buses could be improved to work for working families that have biker shifts or early morning shifts, and that the routes could better accommodate residents who needed to access the DMV and food pantry and other really important services in the city. The next element of community engagement that we conducted were stakeholder consultations. So we had one-on-one interviews with some stakeholders, and we conducted a focus group with stakeholders while we were in Grand Forks. They also echoed the need for enhanced transportation and more options for families in need of emergency shelter. And they also expressed concern for safety, especially nearby affordable housing complexes. One stakeholder highlighted the need for affordable homeownership options to preserve housing stability, and there was concern that property tax increases would impact affordability for homeowners with lower or fixed incomes. Service providers noted that their caseworkers are taking on more than they are now trained for. So they worked with clients with severe physical health, mental health, and substance abuse issues, things that they might not necessarily have come across in years previous. So that was definitely a concern raised by service providers. And they also felt that they were expected to address more problems with less funding. And the last element of community engagement was the resident survey. We received 512 residents for this. They are mostly owners, mostly non-Hispanic white, employed full-time and middle-income. We did get good representation of families with children and households with disabilities. Residents were asked to identify the groups with the most housing challenges. Those groups were low- and moderate-income families, persons who were unhoused, and persons with disabilities. And then the most needed housing types and activities were identified as homeownership opportunities for low- or moderate-income residents, rental housing for low-income renters. So this is really aligned with a lot of the data that we found in conducting the consolidated plan as well. And then housing rehabilitation for low-income owners was also prioritized. We broke down most of these survey results by demographics, so by tenure, by race and ethnicity, income, and household type. So if there was children in the household, if the household had a member with a disability, that kind of thing. So for greatest unmet community development needs, the most selected need was develop parks and playgrounds at 65% of all respondents. But when we break that down by income, you can see that there are differences by respondents. So 81% of people making above $150,000 prioritized developed parks and playgrounds, but this declined as income went down. And people with the lowest incomes tended to prioritize supportive services for special populations.
Great, and I'm just going to go ahead and skip through these last findings to stick to the 10-minute presentation, but I would invite those of you to page through these and understand this is where the variance by race and ethnicity in terms of poverty. Go ahead and go forward. Homeownership. Go forward. As well as we have some information from the resident survey that Lucy shared, which also gives us an understanding of how people experience the housing market differently. So last slide here, when we put this all together, so all of the wonderful analysis that was done to support this plan, we have presented to Colin and his team graft goals. These are goals that would guide the allocation of funding over the next five years. They include supporting affordable rental unit creation, boosting the supply of owner-occupied housing units, clearly a priority in the community, addressing the full continuum of needs for those people with extremely low incomes. I showed you a lot of data about the needs of those individuals, preserving housing stocks, so people are able to preserve their affordability and age and place, as well as get the rehabilitation improvements that they need. And then, last but not least, investing in community facilities and public improvements that benefit low-to-moderate-income people. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it back to staff. Thank you.
Mr. Hanson.
For any members of council who have any feedback on these goals or have questions about the data or want to follow up, feel free to reach out to myself and the team at Root Policy, and we're happy to connect further on that. But if you have any questions, happy to answer those.
Questions for Mr. Hanson?
I guess I have one. I see that you guys have a lot of data in your slides, and I greatly appreciate that. But, you know, I see that it's divided up into race. Would you happen to have any type of data on whether or not people are U.S. citizens or not?
I'd have to ask Root if that's included in their data collection.
Yeah, that's an interesting question. We would have to look at whether or not we are, so most of the data come from an annual survey done called the ACS. And I'm not, I just don't remember off the top of my head, because we typically don't cross it by citizenship. If we have data on the poverty rate and the homeownership rate by citizenship, we can certainly look.
I guess I would appreciate that data. Thank you.
Any further questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
2.3, the presentation, Commercial Air Service Expansion Update, Small Community Air Service Grant.
Mayor Bochenski, members of city council, as the mayor mentioned, we were successful, so a great deal. But now the work continues and the next steps, so we thought we would have the Miehan Aviation Group come forward about, talk about the next steps. And likely, the next steps would involve an updated agreement with us moving through the various steps. As you recall, you got, the city council moved forward with the Miehan Aviation Group. We funded all the work getting us to this point, and so we thought we'd talk about the next steps, and likely, we'd be in front of you with the Miehan Aviation Group and with GFK regarding how do we execute this plan now. So with that, I'd hand it over to the Miehan Aviation Group.
Thanks, Todd. I really appreciate it. This is one of those moments for just a few minutes where you should be celebrating. This is a big success to be able to get one of these grants, because there weren't too many passed out. But, you know, the next steps, of course, would be to start to develop and formalize a business case and analysis that really focuses in on the target carriers for new hub service. We would also want to present that formally at headquarters, and there would be a lot of back and forth on that for a bit, discussing the service levels and understanding the constraints that they're under and their timing and gauging the priority of Grand Forks versus other markets. And then, once we can get to a point where we're successful at securing some service, we would then want to announce the service and initiate an important marketing campaign because we have a lot that we need to promote, and we've got to change behavior, and we've got to get people to understand that there's new service in the market and that they've got to use it. And then we would be very, very closely monitoring that performance on the route, especially in the early days and even before the route started as they're selling. So those are sort of the bigger, broader steps. But initially, before we get started with that, there would be a formal process in the next month where the city and the airport will sign a contract with the DOT to get the, to get and secure and accept the grant award. So that's probably, you know, 30- to 60-day process, and then we would be starting all of those other steps, particularly the developing the business case and analysis.
The only thing that I would add to that is, thank you, is that we submitted the grant as a team, and we're approaching the implementation of the grant as a team. And, you know, thank you to the city's aggressive efforts in pursuit of the grant. That was instrumental in receiving the award and will be key as we work to attract the new service. Yeah.
Well, thank you. Open up any questions. I think it's important to point out, I think, not just when we get the Denver service started, you know, assuming we're successful and continuing forward, but I think, you know, a marketing strategy as we continue to grow is going to be important, not just for that, but the, you know, additional Delta flights, additional Allegiant flights, and as we work towards getting more options. So I think that's going to probably start sooner rather than later, and I think we're all excited to work on this, so any questions? All right. I guess that's what happens when you win. There's no questions. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Have a good night.
Do you have anything further, Mr. Feeney, or we can move on to 2.4?
All right, we'll move on, and 2.4 is the presentation on the Altru Sports Complex update, also with the lot layout and project schedule attached.
Mayor Bochenski, members of city council, as was Noah. Thanks for all your participation. And I know council president Sandy and council member Osowski had some conflicts, so we had really great tours. And I just wanted to get together to kind of say some of the next steps. So really, what I have in front is this timeline right here, and I won't go over the details of the timeline, but we're going to be providing updates to the city council at every city council member, every city council meeting. And I think importantly, we have some decisions that are ahead of us that are the most important and that we'll have to and that will have to likely be made before the end of the year. Number one is, what kind of a steel structure are we going to want to build for both the indoor turf? And the pickleball are the two structures. The aquatic complex will have a different structure, but one of the things we want to do is bring onto our construction manager at risk, our C Mar team, is a steel building company that will help assist with us moving forward. On the trip, we saw various pre-engineered steel structures. The NDSU facility was relatively new, was a $50 million building with support infrastructure like weight rooms and locker rooms and lobbies and all that sort of thing, but all told, about $50 million. Their ceiling heights were 70 feet in the air, and obviously, it's important for them. They're a D1 football program, so they wanted to make sure that they could punt in their facility. But they also share their facility with all the other sports at NDSU from not only football, but baseball and softball and soccer. So that's one of our takeaways, and that was obviously the newest system. We did go look at the Fargo Sports Center, and again, the ceiling heights at that facility, which is more of a recreational youth base, was 40 to 50, and that's probably those heights are more of what we've looked at at the Ultra Sports Complex. Things, you know, we're looking at an aquatic complex to supplement the pickleball and turf, whereas the Fargo's complex is about $127.5 million, led by the Park District. They talked about having a 60-40 split between donors versus the Park District, and they've kind of flipped that, where a vast majority of the funding is coming from the Park District instead, because they felt like the urgency to get the facility done sooner rather than later. So the government stepped in to do a majority of those investments. But I think we've debated some of the wood courts, volleyball, basketball, what they found is they started out with four courts. What they found is they needed to double those to eight courts to really be competitive with building tournaments and that sort of thing. And so the other thing they really told us is Sanford was one of the leaders of their facilities, is that they wanted an equivalent facility that they had in Sioux Falls. And so that's where really the impetus of moving this forward sooner rather than later so that they could have an equivalent facility to support Sanford and Fargo like they do in Sioux Falls. So those are some of the notes that we did. I think one of the takeaways that we found is they have six... They're building six pickleball, likely going up to eight or nine pickleball, but they only have so much money as they move forward. They have Sanford Power in their facility, and so you see weight rooms and training facilities. We're looking, our equivalent would be the Park District would be the sports performance right now as we look at that. But I think the one takeaway we also had with that facility is they had a walking track, and so a walking track similar to what we have at Choice Health and Fitness, that was one of the takeaways, is there a way to incorporate that? They do not have a 300-meter track, but that was one of the takeaways that we've asked the C Mar to take a look at of what that would cost to put around the turf facility. So they're going to take a look at that measure. The West Fargo Halbert Aquatic Center is a mix of a renovated facility and a new facility. The 50-meter pool is a new facility. It's attached onto a former aquatic facility where they renovated, and that's where the instructional pool and some of the locker rooms are. So they're a bit of a mix. The difference with what we're looking at with the... In the city of Grand Forks is that all those facilities would be under one roof without the various, you know, walls that have been amended into that particular facility. What we have left to work on is that not only picking out the steel building in this timeframe, you can see two GMPs. There would be a GMP early next year that would look at some of the outside site work, moving forward with that sooner rather than later. A second GMP that would come forward, in other words, a second bid would be all the internal things. So that's going to take some due diligence so that if we do ask you to move forward, that we have some security beyond the first GMP that we can be successful in the second GMP, because we only have so much funding to get this project done. That's yet to come as we move forward, but we'll be working with you. So leading up to those decisions, you'll be well informed that that is occurring. The other thing that we need to discuss is, at the West Fargo Public Schools Facility, the Halbert Facility, they have a Martha Pool, and that's the vendor we've been looking at, not a plaster pool, but a more of a plastic or metal-driven pool. And so that's what we've been looking at. Again, if we do move forward, that would be another request where we would ask you to front-load some of those initial costs so that we can get them building that pool. They are built in Italy, and so with a lot of things, they need down payments before they'll start building those structures. So those are some of the initial things that we may ask you to move forward with so that we can meet our 2027 construction point. The last thing that Mr. Gostad and I are going to be working on is on the Park District Operation Maintenance Agreement. So we do have a draft. It's redlined, so we are working through some particulars. And as you recall, as we've gone through this, the financial O and M pro forma with the aquatic, with the instructional pool, with the turf that we've described with the sprint track, and then with pickleball, the operating deficit was around $350,000. And so the important part, I think, when we brought that back to you, the important part of that was the instructional pool, because that reduced some of the subsidies, because we could do more swim lessons in a warmer instructional pool. So we're going to be working through those details, and ultimately, there would be an agreement that would come back regarding that. We also brought along Visit Greater Grand Forks and Julie Rig and the Alara Center, because we want to make sure this really fits a campus feel and that we can drive events to this facility and economic impact. So we had a really great participation. That's where we're at. I would say, two weeks from now, we're going to have more information from our C Mar and our design team, but we wanted to be here to just kind of give an overview, and if you had some things that you wanted us to look at over the next two weeks, that when we come back here to City Council, we'd be ready to go with that. So with that, Mayor, we're here to answer any questions or follow up on anything two weeks from now.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. I just wanted to highlight, you know, looking at that pre-engineered structure, we do expect significant savings, low seven-figure savings potentially. So I think that was a huge thing that came out of some of the conversations over the last few weeks, as we try to get the costs in line as best as possible. The only thing I would say is, yeah, that elevated track was something that I think was a really important feature, not just because in Fargo, they didn't just think they were going to use it in the winter. They had originally thought it'd have more use in the winter. It ended up being equal. I mean, in the summer, they had equally a number of people there as they did in the winter. So I think that's important. But also, it's a free amenity. That's an amenity that people can come in and use with no cost, and it drives more people into the building and just brings more life to it. So I hope those costs come in reasonable, and we can, you know, figure a way to get that done, as well as the sports training. That's a really important piece. You saw the activity there when we were down in Fargo. That was my key takeaways, but I guess I'll open up to council, anybody that has any questions for now, or they can wait for two weeks. Mr. Veen, I guess, you're the only taker.
I thought it was a very good trip to take, and I know I learned a lot, and not only learning from what others did, it's probably what they didn't do, and meeting the people. I think that was the other thing, to be able to talk to individually with some of them. So I think it was very beneficial, and I appreciate the offer, and the number of people that actually went and participated was really ideal. It showed the interest that we have in the facility and the importance that I think it's going to bring. I had a couple of comments, and I'm glad you brought up the Operation Maintenance Agreement. I think that's going to be critical. And then you did talk about the pro forma that was a part of that. Well, that... Can I get an opportunity to say, I'd love to see the pro forma for what we've got going in here? Because, you know, the building should be based on the uses, and the pro forma is going to tell us, I think, so much to make sure that we're designing what we need to have. I know one of the things that... One of my key takeaways was something we're not doing was the courts. I mean, the multi-use of the courts was really neat, how you could go from basketball to volleyball, almost instantaneous. We don't have courts, because we determined that we don't need them, but I'm a little bit interested in the future. We may. That would be what I would see us looking at as future growth at time, before this is going to be here for 20 or 50 years, or whatever it is, and our needs will vary, and the ability to master plan for future growth, which I think is a part of that, is also going to be a critical part to that. So I just wanted to add a couple of things for that. So thank you.
Now, would you say, maybe on the Fargo... Marine and I did have a discussion with Moody's, and they're well aware that, you know, we're looking at making this $100 million investment in bonding, and so we had a visit with them last week as part of our rating call, and we said we're still at that point, so they feel comfortable with that. If you look at the Fargo complex, they financed and provided cash from the Park District of about almost $100 million. The remaining, you know, almost $30 million was from private donations, mainly Sanford and Shields in their facility. So plus or minus, we're in and around where that facility is, where they were at. The one thing I wanted to also show is, just because you're going to see this first, we did have... This is going to go through, start going through planning and zoning, mainly with some of the utility easements we're going to change from the use, so that will go... This will start going through planning and zoning on Wednesday, and of course, to City Council, but a lot of it's just reconfiguring this concept from what was previously there when it was more of a greenfield with the previous easements that go through there. So I just want to give you a heads up. It's going to... You'll see this at... Starting to go through planning and zoning this week, and then we'll obviously go to the City Council. The one thing we did look at, this Lot 6, is the Children's Museum Lot. I think it's just short of about four-acre site. The Lot 4 in between Lot 3 is obviously the Ultra Sports Complex. Lot 4 is a separate lot that we're going to keep in reserve for what we may want to look at in the future. Obviously, it'll be likely be green space or some sort of landscaping in between. But when you look at where we have the various lots, Lot 5 is the Stormwater Pond, and then Lot 2 is the BMX Raceway, Hugo's Raceway, and then all the various parking that we have that's in one unit. That's generally how the concept site will be laid out, and we'll be coming through planning and zoning in City Council as we move forward.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Phelan.
If I could add one thing, the concern that I might have long-term is that we don't convert a park back to public usage or to building like we had downtown when we had the problem with the park here, so.
I agree. And that's why it's just Lot 4, so it's kind of an indeterminate use. However, we are placing that as part of the city site and not transferring that to the growth fund. So Lot 5 will be transferred to the growth fund from the city of Grand Forks, so it's removed from that sales tax of the Alara Center. But Lot 4 will be kind of in reserve, and we'll have to determine what that future use may be.
Perfect. All right. Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Seeing no further comments, we'll move on. Item 2.5, we did have the presenter wasn't able to make it today, so we'll punt that for a couple of weeks. So we'll move on to item 3, public hearings. Second reading of ordinances, we have none. So we'll move on to four citizen comments as they relate to action items. Any comments this evening, Ms. Lenmark? No comments? All right, we're moving cruising right along. We'll move on to action items. We didn't have any... That staff wanted polled, so if there's any items that council wants polled, I mean, no.
5.10.
5.10. Any other items?
5.6.
And 5.6. All right. We don't have to wait for anybody online, so we will move forward then on items 5.1, 5.2, 5.3, 5.4, 5.5, 5.7, 5.8, 5.9. Got a motion approved, President Sandy seconded from Ms. Osowski. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Dorsey, we got 5.6 and 5.10.
5.6, Engineering Amendment Number 2 for Project 8658, East Grand Forks, Grand Forks, Red River Crossing.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Veen?
I would ask, Mr. Phelan, could you walk through that one again one more time?
This, Mayor Burcheski and Councilmember Veen. So as you recall, we... The entities, both Polk and Grand Forks County, along with the cities of Grand Forks and East Grand Forks, we've hired SRF to do planning-level grants to secure for an intercity bridge between the two counties and the two cities. This is a zero-budget amendment change order, just because we still have funds that are set aside to do this additional work. So we weren't successful in the first grant application, so we're going to resubmit, and we need to... As I kind of went through some, you know, things that we really did well, and there were some mediums that we needed to turn to high, I think there's two or three medium areas that we need to turn into a high level. And so the consultant feels confident that they'd be able to do that in the next round of submitting the grant proposal. The one thing I noted at the last call, they just look at an intercity bridge as part of this grant, okay? But what I did note is the City Council's on record that of supporting the Maryfield Bridge location. And so just so that with our partners, they understand right now the city supports one bridge crossing location, but I think as part of this grant application, they're going to look at all the various opportunities that we have. But I wanted to make note, and I think the motion didn't specify one location or another. It just said that we would be allowed to move forward as part of this grant application with our partners. So I think that was the 3-2 vote.
Yeah. Yeah. That's... I appreciate it. I wanted to have a little better understanding. This is not for a specific location.
It is not for a specific location.
But it is, keep going. Okay. Thank you.
Any further comment, Mr. President Sandy?
Why was it reported in the paper that it was for Maryfield, specifically for the Maryfield Bridge? What am I missing?
The motion from Councilmember Berg did not name a specific location. However, just to be transparent, I did note that the city's on record that we only support the Maryfield Bridge, you know, the Agra Business location route, and we do not support that. So, you know, if something came back as part of a grant opportunity that we're likely to move forward to the next steps, a City Council would have to review anything other than Maryfield Bridge location.
I guess you can include that in the motion if you wish, so.
Could you repeat that last one again?
I think our consultants are going to review the various bridge locations, so... But if our consultants come back with a location that differs from the Maryfield Bridge location, then we should seek a grant opportunity, okay? That is on 32nd or 17th or some other... They're going to have to come back to the City Council, because I just wanted to make note of all of our partners, that currently this City Council is on record of not supporting any other location but that one. But I think what the consultants have said is that they're not looking at any specific locations at this point. They're just looking at grant opportunities for bridges.
Yeah, I think we were more clear. I think we said we're only going to fund a study that's going to look at Maryfield Bridge only. So I think as they go forward, if they bring back something else, I'm going to be a little bit disappointed that their scope has crept. But that's what was voted on, so I think we've got to stick to that unless council's going to change their mind on that vote. But that's where it was at last blush.
I concur. I want to make sure our partners know if they come back with an alternative strategy and want to move forward with it. This council's on record not to fund that opportunity.
Okay. And you said a different strategy for what are we trying to accomplish with?
I think this is an opportunity to discuss how, what opportunities are out there for us to fund studies on a bridge, an intercity bridge location? That's really what this is. We're not moving the needle much, other than...
Yeah. I think that the idea is, you know, we... Our funds were directed towards that. The other entities that may have funded it are interested in other options, but as this comes forward in the planning phase, we're only interested in the Maryfield Bridge at this point. So I think that because this was dual-funded and there was purposes of looking at two bridges by other entities, it's led to a little bit of conflation, I think, in this. So they're going to look at holistically. Ultimately, our goal is that we find a path forward on the Maryfield Road Bridge. That's why we are doing this.
Well, that's some people's goal. Obviously, that's not mine, but the City Council has taken an action. I can't deny that. But I find that the Maryfield Bridge doesn't solve the traffic congestion problems in town, and none of the studies so far support that. So my concern was, do we want to spend money on something like this if, in fact, it's counter to what I think we need to do for public safety? But you're saying, really, it's looking at everything. Okay. I'm ready to vote.
All right. Do we have a motion? Is there a... I guess we need a motion. Can't just vote. Okay. What's the motion? As is stated in staff recommendation?
Correct.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further comment? All right. Seeing none, why don't you run us down a quick vote, Ms. Dorsted?
Sorry, who did the second?
The second was from Ms. Lawlansky.
Okay.
Ms. Berg, motion, Ms. Lawlansky seconded. Thank you.
All right. Weigel?
No.
Osowski?
No.
Berg?
Yes.
Lawlansky?
Yes.
Friedals?
Yes.
Veen? Veen?
Yes.
And President Sandy?
No.
Motion passes 4-3.
All right. Thank you. Move on to item 5.10.
5.10, every net site license agreement.
All right, Ms., Osowski, do you have a question on item 5.10?
Yeah, I have a question and a comment. I guess, I mean, ultimately, I know I'm going to lose this vote, so we're getting smart meters, but have you guys thought anymore about the opt-out option?
It's tricky. No, at least, I'm happy to share with you, we were just, when the contractor sends out letters to notify people about the, the modern meter changeout, that would be an option.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you so much for that. I guess, I feel that now is a time that we really need to protect our critical infrastructure, and I don't think allowing other companies to come in and manage our data and put their fingers in our water is us moving in the right direction, and I do think that smart water meters cause a lot of privacy and data security concerns, but I'm ready to vote.
I'll move approval there. Got a motion approved. We have a second, second from Ms. Lonsky, President Sandy motion, Lonsky seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries 6 to 1 with Osowski dissenting. All right, move on to item 6, information items.
6.1, statement of changes of cash balance as of September 30th.
Thank you. We will receive and file that. Item 7, approval of minutes and bills?
7.1, vendor list and engineer's estimate.
All right, we got a motion approved from President Sandy, and we have a second, second from Ms. Osowski. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
And 7.2 minutes from October 21st.
Got a motion as is, we got a motion as is from Ms. Lonsky, and a second from Ms. Osowski. Any further discussion on 7.2? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. All right, item 8, any citizen comments tonight of general nature, none? All right, Mr. Phelan?
Nothing to add.
All right. Move on to item 10, mayor and councilmember comments. Any comments this evening, Ms. Osowski?
Yes, I guess, I was kind of wondering about Epitome. Has, is there an update on that? Have they purchased the land yet? Or just kind of where we're standing on that?
Mayor Burchinsky and Councilmember Osowski, I did reach out to Dennis Egan from Epitome Energy for an update last week. I did not receive one. I, I'm pretty certain they don't own the land.
Okay.
We did receive by chance, you allowed us to apply for an EDA grant, Economic Development Administration grant, as you recall. We were notified that we're in a strong possibility of getting the grant, and that grant would, would help pay 80-20 cost split 70th Avenue, which would go just to the south of the Epitome Energy site. So, that's why I reached out to get an update, so before we bring that grant application back and that improvement, that we would have an update about where they're at. So, I will, I'll reach out again, Councilmember Osowski to get an update.
I guess, just as a comment, I, I find it a little bit backwards, that, you know, we already have a development agreement, the pilot, we're applying for grants, and we are still in the same spot of them not even purchasing the land yet. I mean, we've been talking about this for a very long time, and I feel like we keep moving forward, and yet Epitome still has not even purchased the land. At what point do we, as a city, kind of rein it in and stop, you know, our staff from working on it and different things like that, when they have not even purchased the land?
I could probably answer, I think the answer is right now, we haven't really had much staff effort and work on it until we know. It's pretty common practice that until they have the funding before, they're not going to purchase the land. I'm sure they have a purchase agreement, that'd be pretty standard. So there's, I don't think there's anything surprising in that.
I guess I'm just surprised at how far we are in the process, and they haven't even purchased it, and it keeps getting pushed back and pushed back and pushed back. They've been talking about purchasing, purchasing the land for over a year now, and so.
Yeah, I guess that's, I suppose that's in the eye of the beholder.
You could look at Northern Plains Nitrogen, we've been doing that for 13 years now.
Yeah, so that'd be about a tenth of the time, so.
And the other thing I'm going to say is, I hope that everybody gets out and votes tomorrow. I think it is a very important election for us as United States of America, and for the state of North Dakota, and so I hope that everybody goes out and exercises their right to vote. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Osowski. Ms. Berg, any comments this evening?
I just echo encouraging people to go out and vote.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Lonsky, any comments? Mr. Friedols? Mr. Veen?
Quick question. I know last, last week, we had the engineering department talk about some of the projects from this year they're going to extend into next year, the Columbia Road overpass, and Faraday Major continued disruption, and South Washington Street underpass. I was hoping that would be done this year. But where are we then with the 42nd Street underpass? I was just thinking that was going to come back to us to make a final decision on which, which option there was, because are we going to also have that come back here too, and will that be under construction at the same time as these others?
I think the goal, we have to spend those funds by 2029, I think we're on that timeframe. Ultimately, we don't get to make the decision of which route that's, we can recommend, but we're not, the DOT is going to make the decision on which, you know, which alternative that they're going to, going to go with. So, I think we could use an update by year's end on that, Mr. Phelan, that would be great.
I think I just got an email today from the consultant that was looking at providing the City Council update on that. And just so you know, the Washington underpass, they, it could have wrapped up this year, and then the piers will be done next year, and then the, as we heard last week, the Columbia Road will be lifted with the, with the new bearings. But the hope, the goal is those get done next year, and then we would start construction on the 42nd at, near the fall of next year. So those would be opened up while we do 42nd.
Okay. Thanks.
Vice President Weigel, any comments?
No, thank you, Mayor.